Good evening, I want to call it a word tonight's El Dorado Regular City Commission Meeting for February 17th, 2020. Roll call, tablet.
Mary Ann.
President.
Commissioner Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Badway.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Present.
And for tonight's indication, we have Pastor Mark Somerville with Family Worship Center.
Shall we pray? Our gracious heavenly Father, again tonight as we come to this meeting, we come asking for your wisdom, for your guidance and for your direction upon it. Lord, we thank you for our community, we thank you for our leaders that lead our community, we pray your blessings upon each of them in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you very much. All right, if you all please stand and join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. We don't have any proclamations or recognitions on the agenda tonight. We had a personal appearance scheduled, but she's not here, so we'll take this opportunity for public comment. This is for people who wish to address the city commission regarding items that are not on the agenda and that fall into the jurisdiction of the city commission. This is not an opportunity to do that. You're limited to three minutes and we will not comment on personnel matters or matters pending in court. Is there anyone here who'd like to make public comment? All right, seeing that there are none, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that the consent agenda is presented be approved.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. We have some department presentations tonight.
Okay, we're going to make this short and sweet. 2019 annual report for the Public Works Department, start with As for animal shelter. Number of licenses sold has gone down just a hair this year. Number of pit bull applications though are up by a few. Staff continues to work to rescue as many animals from the shelter as possible. I gotta, I gotta tell you that Jay and Donna have probably the hardest job you could imagine when they intake as many animals throughout the year as they do. Donna works diligently to try to, try to have as few put down as possible. And so I absolutely do not envy either of those jobs with those two, those two work very hard to try to do what they can do. It was, this was their list, and on their list was it says, "Control Officer continues to work neighbors versus neighbors," meaning barking dogs, dogs that aren't licensed, just all sorts of things that neighbors complain about other neighbors. This guy has chickens, well this guy has a duck. And so there's lots of things to, to work neighbors versus neighbors where, to coin a phrase, back in the day, it really just didn't matter, but today it tends to matter some. You can see Jay's calls are up from 2018 to 2019 as well, and I think a lot of that has to do with that. Public Works, which will include the street department, traffic signs and signals, everybody. Thirty-nine yards of concrete for street cuts, meaning when we've had a contractor, somebody come in to do work as well as repairs. Hundred twenty-six tons of asphalt for those same street cuts and street repairs. We continue to work with repairing old utility cuts that have failed from years past. Tree trimming for emergency services and refuse collection, keeping trees off of high-profile vehicles like Tyro One or our automated refuse collection vehicles. The department demoed the old tennis courts. Seventy-five tons of coal patch, if you ever receive calls that we're not out patching holes in the wintertime, we are. Seventy-five tons of coal patch, that's, that's three semi-loads. Basketball courts were built at the library and Grand Park. A couple house demos and bike path lights were installed north of 12th Street. IT, Police Department took a good portion of the work this year. Fortunately, with the addition of our IT, our second IT person, camera system, a new camera system was installed at the Police Department. Theirs was a few years old and wasn't doing exactly what they wanted to do, so that was done. Updated hardware and software for Windows 10 and their body cams was also done. They've been busy bringing our InCode on-premise, meaning we used to be hosted and now we will be, we will be, we will be right out of here, so there'll be some advantages for us for that. New domain for the city, mass server migrations from '08 to 2016, and upgraded our backbone to 10G.
I don't have a clue what that means.
That was pretty cool.
Sanitation Department, Refuge Division, new roll-off truck was delivered in January. It completed our complete CNG department, so the entire Refuge Division now operates off compressed natural gas, which is working well for us. We host, we had spring cleanup in April. Unfortunately, July 24th through the 29th, the compost site was closed for, to clean up some illegal dumping that had occurred. August, not August, we discontinued the curbside recycling program and September 23rd opened a drop-off site for corrugated cardboard at the recycling, the old recycling center. Airport was a busy 19 and going to be an even busier 2020. We have a resurfacing reseal of our asphalt runway, runway 422. That will start spring, summer-ish. Planning and design as well as installation of our new lighting project, our new runway lights, some of those lights date back to the early, early eighties, so that'll be a great upgrade for the airport and it will no longer be incandescent lighting, high-intensity incandescent lighting. It will be LED, so now see you understand what all that meant. We held our annual fly-in and pancake feed done by the Boy Scouts in August. We are putting the final touches on recruiting and a light aircraft, which is a glider-type ultra-light builder for, to base out of, out of EQA, out of the airport. Attended KODA grant seminars and fuel sales 2018 versus 2019. As you can see, we increased some fuel sales there, which is good, and then the crack, cash and credit sales.
Why the big increase in fuel?
When they can, when pet, when chemical applicators can use the airport, they will and they will buy fuel from us. When they don't and they can't, we obviously see a dip in fuel sales there, but we like to get as many chemical applicators as we can. How about that?
That was too short.
What's my time? Come on.
Shush, you down there.
No pictures.
No pictures.
No, that was in Public Works. We talked about all that.
Indian Street, very streamlined, Brad.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you, Brad.
So, I do have a question. So, on your slide at that, with animal, animal control, you said license, I think it said licenses were down a little bit, but pit bull applications are up.
Mm-hmm.
Are you saying, I mean, is that kind of the trend, more and more participation people with, with their pit bull applications?
So unfortunately, so there's two questions there. The number of animal license sold, I think if, if we were to go back to doing our door-to-door, our canvassing specific neighborhoods, I think we could get that number up. Unfortunately, we don't have the staff to do it like we used to do it. So those numbers will fluctuate, they shouldn't fluctuate a lot. I mean, unfortunately, people lose animals, some come, some go, people move in, they move out. As long as we stay pretty close to that number, it doesn't worry me much. The number of pit bulls in town, it has gone up, I mean, there's, and that's, again, that's kind of some of the neighbor versus neighbor thing. We, we get lots of phone calls from neighbors when a new pit bull moves into the neighborhood. I don't, I mean, that's, that's fine, I don't blame them, that's, that's, they're totally understandable. So, those are going up, I don't think they're going up exponentially, but they are going up.
I guess my question more so is, are you finding that more and more people are coming out of the shadows and participating and doing what they're supposed to do with those applications, or do we still have that challenge?
You know, we find less and less that have had them for five or six years and just now registered. That honeymoon phase is kind of over with. First couple, three years, yeah, we, we kept catching, we kept catching, we kept having people come out of the woodwork and we knew they'd had those dogs. Now, I think it's, we'll find them and people are really good about bringing us, bringing them up and getting them licensed, getting the paperwork done. I mean, it's somewhat of a rigorous process to do it. I mean, there's a KBI background check that's done, there's, if you don't own your property, you have to bring a note from your landlord that says it's okay, I mean, there's lots of things they have to do, so the folks that are doing it, that's, that's great, and like I say, we don't, I mean, we have denials, but we don't have them hand over fist, so.
Well, I know they do great work down at the animal shelter and, and I know that it's, it's not the easiest job. I get, have had some questions in the last month or two from people wondering if there were opportunities to volunteer at the animal shelter and help kind of with that process. Are there things that can be done that the community can get involved with?
We don't.
Outside of adopting.
Right. We, we don't, we don't do any volunteer work at the animal shelter and basically because we don't know what kind of animals we're going to have in the shelter and we don't want to put anybody in danger. Same with cats, I mean, they can be, just because it's not a ninety-pound German Shepherd or a hundred-pound German Shepherd, a thirteen-pound cat that's not happy about being in a cage can do just as much damage. So we don't, we don't do much community service down there. We, we push folks off to local rescues because local rescues will, will have ways to, that they can utilize that. We tell people, Humane Society takes volunteers, and they take volunteers to do things like inventory and food and going and picking up food and stuff like that, where we're just not that, we're not that large.
Okay. There is information down there if somebody wants to come down and talk about volunteering.
Absolutely, Donna can help them. And again, she, she spends an unbelievable amount of time trying to work with these rescues and she tries to make it work, God bless her, she does, because she didn't want, she didn't want to have those numbers beat up. And so, you know, it's, it's one of those things that sometimes those rescues are hard to work with and sometimes are super easy and, and she's had them both ways over the last thirty days where I'll get an email that says, "You may be getting a phone call." Donna is generally not the one in our department that I would get phone calls about, so, but yes, no, that's a good question.
Good, well, I appreciate the work that all your staff does.
Good question. Anything else?
Beat it.
I'm out.
Now we have department update from Parks, Recreation and Cemetery.
Mayor, Commissioners, I don't think I can be quite as fast as Brad, but I'll do my best.
Do you have pictures?
I do have a few pictures, so.
Well, you get Kendra's vote then.
So we're going to start with the pool this year. As you can see, our daily admission of the pool was down about nine hundred this year. Part of that was we had some weather days that cut into our attendance. The rest of it, I don't really have a good answer for. Pool attendance has been declining over the past few years since we opened Spray Parks. We, we see a lot of people at Spray Parks, words free, so. Our number of free passes however was up in 2019 by about four hundred. And our Twilight Swims, those are our Friday evenings, we do, this year we did one fewer, that's part of the reason why our number was down by about three hundred. We do those three or four times a year depending on the calendar, how it falls. Our last one this year, we had poor weather and our attendance was way down, or we would have been closer to that 2018 number. Our pool rentals, so our private parties were up by six this year. If we had more Saturdays and Sundays, our pool rentals would go up, there just aren't enough Saturdays and Sundays in the calendar. And this year, our swim lessons were down by about twenty, as you can see, that number moves up and down. We're usually somewhere between two hundred and two hundred and forty, so not a big change. Our baseball softball numbers this year, we were down twenty-eight kids between baseball and softball. We had some age out, we had a fairly large group in 2018 of upper division, they aged out, and our lower divisions did very well. It's that group in the middle where we're kind of struggling with our numbers. Part of this is the travel aspect of the league, we do lose a few, and part of it is sadly it's just apathy. We just have too many kids that aren't participating. Basketball, we were within nine from last year. Again, we lose a few because of the travel aspect, and that's unfortunate, but with the numbers that we have, it's the option that we have that's, that's best for the community right now. Volleyball, pretty consistent, that number stays in that two hundred range every year, so this is just one season of volleyball, we used to do two, we now just do a fall session. This is where we allow our friends from the Circle District to come play with us, and we also still have our out-of-town teams from Flint Hills and Blue Stent that participate. Soccer numbers, pretty consistent, this is two sessions, fall and spring, our numbers are pretty consistent around the three fifty to three seventy-five range, so again, pretty much on target. We had a huge spike this year in flag football, that's largely attributed to the news of concussions and things of that nature, so not as many kids are playing tackle football at that early age and they're switching over to our flag football program. We had a great flag football program this year. Good. So, in total, we were down about thirty-five kids, thirty-six kids this year through all of our programs. Again, I can't pinpoint, some of it's travel and some of it is just not participating. We've had lots of conversations with our partners at the YMCA about how we increase participation numbers. We've got some ideas that we're going to try this year and hopefully we can drive those numbers up. Adult sports this year, as you can see, we were up in two of the three. Little surprise about volleyball, it does roller coaster a bit. It won't surprise me when we get to next fall if that number climbs again. This session that just started, it actually hasn't started yet, it starts next week, was low, so I'll bet our fall numbers are up, but I can't explain why it goes up and down, but it does. So, just a quick recap of all the ball fields and soccer fields, we've got two full-time and five seasonal employees that take care of the thirty-six acres of ball fields that we have. We did some special events this year, our mother-son bowling, we do that around spring break in partnership with Grizzly Bowl, and that's always full, we tap that at about forty participants and we hit that number. Our pitch-hit-run this year, we had strong participation in, we had a young man who did very well at the next level, once they were the winner here, they went to the next level, did very well there, and we think that he's got a chance to go a little further this year. We're agreeing to do that in April at McDonald Stadium. Of course, our Fourth of July event this year, we were hampered by rain a little bit, but we still got it in and we were able to dunk a few people in the tank and that made for lots of positive feedback. We did a pumpkin painting contest at Halloween this year that went very well, our annual creative turkey contest that we do, and then our annual holiday craft party, that number was down a little bit this year, again, it roller coasters. Our park system, hundred and two acres of parks, we have three full-time and seven seasonal employees. This year, we're going to do a little preseason weed control to try to get ahead of some things. The weather needs to cooperate for that, that'll start here in the next couple of weeks, weather permitting, at our major parks, we're going to try that at North Main and East and Summit to try to stay on top of that and hopefully get a better stand of grass and fewer weeds. Some pictures of our park system. The, as you know, and as Brad mentioned, we installed the new playground equipment this year at the Gordy Park and at the Library Park. We moved the playground equipment from North Main that was relocated from tennis courts, it's now at the Boys Baseball Field, so that'll be a great enhancement over there for the siblings of our baseball players to play on during games. And sometime this spring, the construction of the new North Main Playground will happen, that's going to be done by the company and not by city staff. All the others that I just mentioned, city staff installed and did a very good job. Our park rentals, so people that are calling to reserve our shelters, were up this year. We only reserved the Pavilion at North Main, Forest Park and East Park, those are the three that are reservable, hundred and thirty-two of those, mostly on weekends, there are some weekday rentals, but most of those happen in, on the weekends typically from March to November. And you can see how it was, how that number was arrived. Gordy Park, we're not reserving anymore, and the North Main gazebo is not being reserved anymore since it's down in the tennis complex, we're just doing the Pavilion. But again, they're all available on a first-come, first-served basis. Cemetery staff, we still have two full-time and five seasonal employees taking care of the fifty-seven acres of the three cemeteries. Again, Memorial Day is our biggest weekend for the cemetery crew. I thought they did a pretty good job this year of being prepared. We dealt with some weather issues as we always do around that time, but we got through them and I thought things went very well. Lots of positive comments this year from citizens and visitors to the cemeteries. We had a hundred and eight burials this year, it seemed like most of those happened between November and December. That crew was, was hopping for two months and that's, sadly, that's kind of the way it works in the cemetery business, a lot of, a lot of services in the last two months of the year. And our lot sales were right on par with last year. The Parks and Recreation Crew also maintains another seven, hundred and seventy-four acres of grounds and road sides. And our projects, as I mentioned, the East Park Pavilion, this was done, we did have the contractor install the shelter, but our Public Works Crew did the concrete work and that turned out really well, lots of positive feedback so far. The Summit Park Shelter, not one hundred percent finished yet, but we're about ninety-five percent, the shelter's up, we have a sidewalk to pour, grill to put back in, and then it will be wrapped up. New picnic tables are ordered for that, so when they get here, we'll get those in. As Brad mentioned, we have the new basketball court at Grand Park that Public Works put in for us, and there's the Gordy Park Playground Equipment and the Library Park in addition to the half-basketball court that went in at the library. Most days that I go by the library and the weather's decent, it's busy. And then this is the playground equipment that was relocated at the Boys Baseball Field. As part of the tennis court project, we had, we decided to go ahead and replace that split-rail fence along the road to give it a nice fresh look with this round rail, it should hold up a little better than that old split-rail did over the years. We're working on the west side right now, weather's slowing us down there, but it should be up as soon as we get some cooperative weather. This year, we repainted the pool, got it ready for this, for the season. We won't paint the pool this offseason, that's usually about every three to five years, just kind of depends on the elements, but that's quite a project that our staff took on and got finished in time to open the pool. The playability of our ball fields continues to improve, the efforts of Jason and Brian and the staff is making tremendous headway on our outfield and our infield, so I'm really happy with the progress that we're making there. We installed a new bullpen at the Boys Baseball Field, got new dugout covers up on all of our fields to keep the elements off the heads of our players, and we installed some chair bags at McDonald Stadium, these were out of the old Lawrence Dumont Stadium and staff got those put in this fall. And of course, the tennis court project that we've talked about on numerous occasions, still a little fine-tuning to do there. I was by there yesterday when the weather was not, no, I'm sorry, this afternoon, and saw some people out this afternoon. Cemetery Crew did a lot of tree trimming, we got lots of positive feedback about that, some markers that you couldn't see for years are now visible, some families are very happy about that. That's quite an undertaking. When we started that project, I was a little nervous about the feedback, but so far it's all positive.
So far so good.
Right. So, that's it, any questions?
With the pool, I was getting my haircut the other day and a gentleman told me that the pool is leaking, how bad is it, that pool, the condition it's in?
I'm not convinced that we have a serious leak, we've had some places you could see in that picture that we have to patch and we have to patch them every year. I believe most of our loss is splash out and evaporation. There is one new place that we're keeping an eye on, we're maybe losing a little, but our water usage is not changing dramatically.
Thank you. So, I've got a couple of questions. So, how much, just for public information, how much is the, like, an individual pass to the pool and a family pass, how does that work?
I wish I'd have been prepared for that question, let's see.
I wish I'd have thought I was going to say question.
I don't go to the window and sell those, so I need angry here to answer the question for you.
It's fine.
I believe an individual pass is fifty and a family pass, I believe, is one hundred, but please don't hold it.
Okay, that's fine, I'd just be curious if you guys get that from. So you talked about baseball, softball and basketball being down a little bit because of some of the travel that they do, so baseball and softball are the, where do they travel to today? So, is that the Heights League?
Baseball softball's the Heights League, so the furthest trip there is Valley Center. It's Valley Center, Park City, Benton, Towanda, Andover and El Dorado.
Okay.
The Walnut Valley League is the basketball league we're in, that's Benton, Towanda, Whitewater, Flint Hills, Blue Stent, El Dorado.
Perfect. And then the only thing that I have was, so as, as we looked at the parks, I love all of the work that has been, that you guys are doing in the parks, I think every day they, every day I drive by and they seem better and better, you guys are doing a great job. I've had it for a while now, I've been, had kind of a group that's been, had some interest in trying to do some community work in some of the parks to help update some of the, some of the neighborhood parks or the pocket parks that we have, similar to the project we did for the Martin Park out there at BG. Are there opportunities for that? Do you have some pocket parks that need some, some rehab that, if there's opportunities to, to generate some community interest and neighborhood interest in getting that done?
Sure, all of our, our pocket parks can always use some community assistance. David and I've had some preliminary conversations about that and tried to structure something that would work for the community, kind of an adopt-a-park project, if you will, but yeah, South Summit, Rice, McCollum, all of those can always use help from the community.
Okay. I'd like to explore that a little more when we can, because like, we've talked, I mean, I've got some people that are interested in, as am I, in being involved in that.
That's great.
And I think there's opportunities for, for the neighborhood to kind of be able to adopt a park and have a part in it is beneficial as well, so, appreciate the update.
Okay. Sixty and a hundred. Sixty and a hundred, that was pretty close.
Well, we won't hold you to the fifty.
Okay, I'll make up the last ten dollars.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, seeing that there's no old business, we'll move on to the one new business agenda item, which is no parking on the 600 block of North Orchard Street.
Thank you, Commissioners. Staff has been working with USD 490 on looking at some solutions for some issues as far as children, pedestrians walking to Blackmore Elementary. Both Superintendent Kathy Robinson are here tonight as well, if you have any specific questions on flows around Blackmore.
If you have any specific questions on flows around Blackmore. But we have been working together on the, on a project to add a crosswalk mid-block. You will see that right there near the intersection of Fifth Avenue and Orchard Street. The school district has gone ahead and laid concrete here for this walk. When the school was originally constructed, there was a sidewalk through their parking lot here that just dead-ended at the public right-of-way. It did not go any, anywhere else. Orchard today has sidewalk on the west side that ties on into a kind of a sparse, sparsely connected sidewalk system around Third Avenue, but there is, there is sidewalk in that area. So what we have before you tonight is a consideration of restricting on-street parking during school days in that 600 block of North Orchard, and that would be specifically on the west side. When the school, prior to school being constructed, the City Commission did pass a resolution to restrict on-street parking on the east side of Orchard along, along the school district's property line. However, with this crosswalk and congestion in the area, lots of traffic, opening up the visibility of the crosswalk, we're recommending going ahead and restricting on-street parking during school days to, on the west side of 600 block of North Orchard. With that, then Public Works will look to add the signage, push-button controls for the crosswalk, and Brad is still here, so if you have any specific questions on how that will function, he'll be able to answer those.
So, we have a, you have a sidewalk on Sixth Street?
Correct.
That stops at the street? No sidewalk from the Sixth Street sidewalk to the school, or do we just walk across the grass?
Correct. It's, when, when the concept of Blackmore being constructed was in the site, if you recall, the city went and constructed sidewalks along Sixth Avenue from Metcalf all the way to Star Street, so almost where Walgreens is, as part of helping that interconnectibility through that area. And the city did not have the funds to go ahead and make that completion or do any additional sidewalk along Orchard. Our project was specifically for Sixth Avenue.
Okay.
So, when we do the no parking, that's going to put no parking at all on Orchard? There's a lot of complaints about that, that school and that parking lot. The parents don't know how to use it. They come in there early and they stop in the middle, and it backs the traffic back up on Orchard. There needs to be some way to get those parents to go all the way to the end so they can all go in and out together, but it, I hear about it all the time, that it's just a mess down there on that school.
We think a lot of times, and I'll let them speak at this more specifically, a lot of times, as these facilities are built and you understand the flow to them and where children are walking, beat down the paths and try to figure that out, as long as we stay in communication with the school district and, you know, be involved and hear people out, you know, we can try to solve any issues.
So, the, so the proposal is for no parking on the west side, north of Fifth?
Correct.
From like, seven to five or seven, whatever?
Yeah.
Monday through Friday?
Just school days.
And then where you?
But it's not all day. I mean, it's like you said, 7:00 AM to 6:00, like on Olive and Third, I think it's 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, I think.
Yeah, it'd be seven, that one probably be seven to four. We talked to the school about it, but they think everybody, nobody will be there before seven, and everybody will be gone by four, so our signs will, will say no parking, seven to four, school days.
And then the crosswalk is, it's on the, it looks, it's on the south side of Fifth, then?
Yeah, so you'll have the advance warning of the crossing here. You'll have signs right at, at the ramps, push-button activated, those light, those signs will light up on the border and, and flash to make the owners aware that someone has activated that switch. I believe there'll be a crossing guard there as well to help those children across there and make sure there's no issues.
And you've got a sidewalk that runs on south down to Third?
Correct.
On the west side, and then, okay.
So, it connects, connects right in here. You have sidewalks in these areas. Some of the blocks aren't fully connected, but there is a sidewalk system wrapped in there.
Now, are there lights?
Yeah, so the, these signs themselves, right here?
Right.
Will light up and flash.
Okay, but just basically there in the middle, not on the north or south end?
That's correct.
Right.
Okay.
So, it won't be like the other ones where we have the big cross, arm over the top of the street, it'll just be the sign flashes?
If, if you've been up Third Street at Residence?
Not yet, no.
That, that signal there is very similar to what this will look like. That's activated just off of, off of time. This will be activated off of a button. So, the crossguard will push the button, lights will come on, and they'll walk out and stop traffic.
So, what will the benefit be to make that no parking? Because people park there now. What's, what's going to be the benefit to the parents?
The, the ease of flow, like you spoke about, the mess of getting in there and out there, and opening up that visibility of traffic coming down Sixth Avenue to see that crosswalk and not have vehicles, you know, parked along that curb, you know, restricting that, the vision there of the crosswalk.
So, that's going to put people parking into the neighborhood then, on Fifth Street? Or parking or driveway?
Well, the advantage, I mean, an advantage that I would see if I'm driving down Orchard is, is if the cars aren't parked there, there's not kids darting in and out behind the cars. And so, the advantage is to the kids, in my mind.
And I think a big concern as well is parents dropping kids off from the street.
Currently, we have kids that, currently, we have kids that are, Cathy, will you introduce yourself? I'm Cathy Robertson. I'm the Director of Fiscal and Support Services. And currently, along the street, here and here where there are cars, kids are just flying across the road, and we have numerous complaints that people almost hit my child, so we wanted to connect up with the sidewalk, because they're walking up that sidewalk on that west side of the street. There's just no place for them to cross. And so, this will give them a place to cross. We'll have a crossing guard out there, both AM and PM, and so this will give them, I've actually had people complaining about cars parking in front of their houses on the west side of the street, so it's going to be, you know, compass half-pull, depending on which way you look at it, along Orchard on the west side. I've, I've received phone calls complaining that people park there, so.
So, I think it's great. My daughter went to Jefferson, and I know that the crosswalk there on Third Street was, because we walked to school every day, and so it has kind of surprised me that there wasn't, thus far at least, a crosswalk on Orchard.
So, I can assume this will be reevaluated after a few months to see if more is needed or something different is needed?
I think, I think we're dedicated to continue communication on all facilities and any issues that happen anywhere.
I don't think this is the last change, and this isn't the final fix, and every, I think every year we're going to find something new, so I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm definitely okay with it, because I figured, I figured this was coming, and we'll probably do something again next year with whatever the other path that kids go, so. And you said, you said the school district has already installed that sidewalk to the crosswalk?
Correct.
So now, we just need to work with the school district and us to get Sixth Street connected as well?
Who, who pays for the backlit crossing signs? Do we pay for that?
Yeah, the district.
The district is paying for those.
Oh, okay.
So, and they're paying for the parking as well?
I'm not supposed to come here?
Come on.
That is how dedicated we are to this piece of, sorry, Teresa Tosh Superintendent. That is part of how dedicated we are to putting this crosswalk in for the kids. I, I can respond exactly to what you're saying. This is not the first thing we've done. This house right here, we had kids darting through the yard, and so we had to fix that fence. That was step, that was like our very first piece of this kind of puzzle, if you will. Then we put a crossing guard here to try to get kids safely across that area, but we do. We have parents who stop down here and wait for their kids to get out of school, and we've got kids who are darting across to get in between those cars, and this was the next right answer for us. So, putting in that, we finished the sidewalk from nowhere to somewhere.
Right.
That's kind of been how we've talked about it. And then moving this piece across, they're working with the city. It's just been the next right answer to keep kids safe.
Of all the schools, you hear about this one all the time because of the parking, and the other ones seem to be able to, to do what they need to do with this one. And even if you look at it, if they make it one way, that would mess up the traffic too.
Is there parking behind the building?
There is a, there is a bus drop-off in the back of the building. He's going to work his magic and flip it to this.
On the east side of it, there is.
Just Google. So, there is a bus loop back here, but there is no real parking back there.
Do y'all have any other questions?
The other thing I think is important, the thermal panel is installed, so the actual crosswalk itself will not be installed until the temperature is right. It has to be a certain temperature for so long before that, or otherwise we can put it down and it won't function correctly.
I do like that at Skelly, they've made the crosswalks green and white. I mean, they're more noticeable. I mean, white, you just kind of ignore, but the fluorescent green kind of catches your attention. Do I have to give Brad credit for that?
He's taking credit, don't worry about it. He's dancing. He's, he's going to go back there, so.
And they spell school right.
And they spelled Skelly.
You ready?
If you guys are ready, I'm ready for motion.
I move that Resolution Number 2901, a resolution approving the installation of traffic control devices on the west side of the 600 block of North Orchard Street be approved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion?
I got one question for Scott. Will they continue to study that to help it improve the traffic flow through there? After we do this, he will continue to?
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll, I'll check in and see what, if they're having issues.
Because I do get a lot of phone calls about that, so.
I drive every day, and I don't really see any traffic related instances often. I mean, they do occur quite a lot sometimes, but I think generally, parents have a routine now, and they understand how it works, and it flows pretty well.
It does flow pretty well?
Yeah.
I think coming from schools that had, well, zero off-street parking, what we have today is a, is a major change.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. We're voting on the traffic control devices. Does this include the closing down of the west side of Orchard from seven to four?
Yeah, it's the traffic control device, device is a, is a signage.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the resolution, it says no parking, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM on school days. Thank you, Scott. Any other questions, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. Motion carried, five out. Next, City Commission Updates.
I have no report to make.
I have nothing.
The meeting, I think, is not till Thursday, so I don't have a.
CTC hasn't, hasn't met yet. I wanted to follow up on the container on Central at the old gas station, and wanted to know what was going on with that, what happened there?
Yeah, so the regulation that you will pass for container storage only applies to residential properties.
Okay.
So, that's, that's the sense of that.
Okay, so, so are, are commercial properties going to put Conex in that front yard and just leave it there?
I believe that is.
They gotta be setbacks and, and, you know, they can't, it gotta be, it has to be for storage and that sort of thing, not for like, habitable space or, or, you know, selling items.
I'm just trying to, just trying to figure out where the line is.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if the commission likes to look at it?
Yes, I'd say if we discuss it further, we can get it scheduled. I mean, it's, it just, I didn't feel like that was kind of the, the intention as it was presented to us when we passed that, was that like, we're okay with, you know, on a temporary basis to, you know, to store your stuff while you're doing construction or, you know, on a temporary timeframe. It wasn't, I mean, you, because you, that's just kind of how it was sold to us, I feel. So, I just, I felt like that is a breach of what the intent was. Personally, I mean, I could be completely wrong, I just, I'm just not comfortable with people just being able to put, you know, just start piling Conexes in front of their, their property, in front of their business, and without, you know, then we're going down the path that we did with IPS, where you've got, you know, you've got trailers packed everywhere.
Sure, so I was, I was not on the commission when the?
It was left back years ago, you're now.
Right, I'd, I'd love to get into a work session just to talk about it and understand it a little more. If we could get that scheduled for a work session, that'd be great.
See, I, I didn't even think about the difference between residential and commercial property.
It, it wasn't, I, maybe just.
We can send you that agenda and all those documents, David.
I, I think it's an opportunity to review it at a work session, so that I can understand it as well, and we can all be on the same page with the discussion. So, add it to the list.
And, and me and Kendra would also like to schedule the next couple of work sessions, the homelessness conversation.
Which one?
Homelessness.
Yeah, so the plan is that I'm going to, I'm currently going through all of the priorities that you will discuss, and then we're going to bring all that to you, and then the commission can decide what's going to be the next one, and the next one, and the next one, and so forth, because there was quite a lot of topics that you guys threw out there, and so we want to make sure there's a process in terms of going through that and prioritizing as a body, so that's kind of where we're at on that.
I think, I think one of the next two work sessions are just throw on the agenda, because I think Matt and Kendra have like an update, just some information I want to
Oh, yeah.
Throw in there for some ideas, so that we can just chat about it. But no, I agree with you, and we talked, you know, just when we had our work session or when we had our strategic planning Saturday with Bacon, we had an opportunity to, to throw a lot out there for you guys, and so I know you guys are getting that all compiled, so.
Right.
Once we get that going, we'll be able to prioritize some things, but I think there's an opportunity for them to kind of add some information to the discussion.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
That's all I got. And I don't, I don't have anything. So, City Managers Report.
So, tomorrow night is the annual manager dinner. Just a reminder, that's at, well, the cocktail hour begins at 5:30, dinner begins at 6:00, and it'll be the Elks Lodge Building right out here downtown, so make sure that's on your calendar. We've, the city's been promoting pretty heavily, we've started to promote pretty heavily, Census 2020. The Census doesn't actually start until April, but the state and a number of other parties are, are asking cities to promote it early and often to get that idea out in front of people. It's pretty important, it happens once every 10 years, as you all know, but more importantly, the Census is used by the federal government to determine the number of representatives the state of Kansas gets to send to Washington to represent itself. The more population we have, the more we potentially can have in that regard, and then as it relates locally, it also determines the amount of federal funds that will get allocated based on formulas to the city and even Butler County over that decade-long period of time. So, just to give you an idea, the city would stand to receive approximately $47,500 per household in federal funds over the next 10 years, so per, per household, $47,000 during So per, per household, forty-seven thousand dollars during that decade. So for the city of El Dorado, that's approximately twenty-six million dollars that we can stay and gain through highway funds, through different social programs that the federal government has. So a lot of, a lot of different programs and some of that will go through the, the state, through the county. Some of it will come through the state, through the city. But it's, it's very important to count every single person in the, in the city as well as the county so that we can make sure that we get our fair share of those, of those federal funds that'll be coming down. One thing that we're starting to do is identify hard-to-target areas or populations that we can try to determine strategies for getting those folks counted. And we're just continuing to share information to kind of encourage people to fill out that census form. This year will be the first year that you'll be able to do it online, as something that they're gonna do. But everyone will receive a postcard in the mail. You can fill that out, much as you would any other census, or you can go online and fill it out. The information is, is confidential, but in large part, most of the information that you can share is, is pretty benign anyway. So we encourage people to think about that and consider groups that they may know of or folks that they may know of that may not necessarily be inclined to fill that out and inform them of the importance of that to the community moving forward. Finally, the last thing I wanted to kind of share with the community, the commission's already aware of this, but very soon, the next couple of days, members of the public will be receiving a notice from the city as a result of a notice we received from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment regarding a monitoring violation regarding total organic carbon. The notice that you'll be getting in the mail is somewhat technical, but the, the important thing is to note that the issue is not an immediate health risk and that the city's water is safe to drink and use as normal. So that's the important thing. There's, there's no health, health effects or any issues that you have to boil your water or anything like that. The primary reason for the notice results from actually natural effects largely created by the wet season that we had. So the lake was down, which caused some vegetation to grow around the lake. And then as we had significant amounts of rainfall during two thousand eighteen and nineteen, the lake came up and it killed a lot of that organic material which fell to the lake and then became organic carbon that eventually breaks down and as the city draws water from the lake, we have to treat that. And the city's water treatment plant and the processes they use, they did everything they could to reduce that number. But unfortunately, the number, the measurable total organic carbon was just slightly over the amount that was required for the notice, and so we do have to provide that notice. They monitored on a twelve-month rolling average and unfortunately, we were just slightly below where we needed to be for that. So fortunately, due to the natural occurrences in the environment, that was the large part of, of why that actually happened. The good news is that we are slowly coming back into compliance as the lake levels are returning back to normal. So it will be, very soon, we'll be back into compliance. But because of the type of violation it was, the state law does require us to provide that notice to the public. So we will be receiving that in the mail. If you have any questions, feel free to call the city and we'll be glad to explain it to you. Other than that, that's all I have for now.
Anything else for the good of the order? I consider motion to adjourn then.
I move for adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh.